I'd like to call the 17th meeting of the Mayor and City Council on September 26, 2022 to order. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak for each agenda item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
Mayor Mau.
Councilman Cole is out for a family medical emergency, so our thoughts and prayers are with him. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, the approval of minutes of 15th meeting on Monday, July 11, 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the minutes scheduled July 11, 2022.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
All right, and moving on to Agenda Item 4, the report of the Mayor and City Council. I will start with Councilman Sidnor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This weekend, had a chance to go out to Free State of Aberdeen, Maryland. Free State is a challenge academy for high school dropouts, anybody in high school from 16, 18 years old who was in danger of dropping out of high school, already dropped out of high school. This is my third time mentoring a youth in this program. This one is kind of important because the other two youth I've mentored before, I kind of knew them, I was mentoring them for four to five years. This young man I just met over the summer, his mother is a citizen of Laurel, Maryland, and she was talking to me during the summer about programs that she can just put a sign in and mentors. And I told her about the Free State program, and she knew something about it as well. And she asked me whether I'd be the mentor. Well, actually, when, like I said, she couldn't get anybody, I'd be the mentor. So she couldn't find someone, and I ended up being the mentor for this young man. And we had a long conversation, like a three-hour visit. I think this young man is going to be on the right track. I always talk about how important that youth are. Kids are very important to us because, you know, we don't raise the kids right, then they're going to go straight. And you guys know my background, I worked in law enforcement for 22 years, seven years inside a federal prison, 15 years in probation office in DC. So anytime we can mentor our young people and guide them right back on the right track is very important because we want to have them out there doing positive things. And so hopefully this young man can make it through the Free State Academy. It's a six-month per military academy, and then he come back home 18 months with the follow and make sure that he stay on track. I'm always encouraging young folks that's unsure what they want to do with their lives going to the military. I went in the military 18 years old, stayed in that 22 years, 24 years, 12 years, I could do it in 12 years in reserves. So young people aren't sure what they want to do, the military is a great branch to go into. So hopefully I can get this young man joining the military and stay track. Because anytime you can, like I said before, if I close out, anytime we can pour inside our young people, let's please pour into them. Because our job is community raising right. That concludes my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Sounds like a wonderful thing you're doing in the community. We all know you're doing it, but it's good to echo and put that out there again for people to know. Some people are looking for mentors. And I know the lady you were speaking of, and she was really thoroughly looking for someone, and I'm happy you stepped up to that way, thank you. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Council President. So on September 13th, we had the Education Advisory Committee meeting. It had been a couple of months off, but we had a good productive meeting. On the 15th of September, I went to the grand reopening of the Dash Inn on Sandy Spring Road. That same day, I went to the MD Cannabis Science Conference at the Baltimore Convention Center on behalf of Connor Sheffield Foundation. That evening, I went to my first meeting with PG-CMA, and it was actually in-person at the Green Belt City Council Chambers. On the 16th of September, I went to Comptroller-elect, that's Democratic-elect, Brooke Learman's municipal leader, Route 1 Roundtable Conversation. It was great to be joined by municipal leaders from across Prince George's and some of the members from the Laurel City Council joined us as well, and Mayor Mau. The 17th, I went to Hands Up Guns Down event, in which we were able to help by sponsoring a small sponsorship. And that event had day-long activities, and, you know, it's essentially a violence prevention event and a gun violence prevention event. And we were able to have that right there on the Prince George's side of Laurel, Laurel Blue Road. On the 18th, I was able to attend the Renters United Maryland Coalition Meeting at the Owen Brown Interfaith Center, which was very great because it was joined by several organizations that do, you know, tenant protections and, you know, rent work around the state. And so they talked about what their priorities are going to be for the General Assembly. We had a special meeting on the 21st, so I was happy to discuss the legislation I had been working on, the Anti-Homeliness and Displacement Act. On the 24th of September, we had Black, I was invited for Black Cannabis Week in Philadelphia, hosted by Daco, and I was a panelist on the Social Justice segment Cannabis Opportunities Conference. And the conversation was, can we repair our communities through cannabis? And then lastly, I want to say happy Rosh Hashanah and Shana Tova. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Councilman DeWalt?
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to have our citizens here at the meeting. My hearts and prayers go out to, and he's an actual resident of Patuxent Place, Dick Stivik. He suddenly died up in Pennsylvania just, well, he got sick up in Pennsylvania just the other day, and it was a rare, rare form of some disease that shot, shut down all his organs. He was a, he lived in Old Town, he also lived, just recently had moved to Patuxent Place and attended a couple of our meetings. And he was also a member of the Knights of Columbus, that what I understand about him. And our hearts and prayers go out to him and his family, and his family, Ben, his son, who was a Special Olympics athlete, who I know very, very well. On the, I too went along with the Mayor and Councilmember Mitchell, the Brooke Learman up at the Union Hall, the Insulator Union Hall on the 16th. Very, very, very good meeting, very educational as far as Comptroller's Office goes. On the 18th, I went to the University of Maryland where I received my long-awaited, I think it was two and a half, maybe three years that I completed at the Academy of Excellence through the Maryland Municipal League, and it was held in their chapel down there, which was very, very pretty. That Monday, I went in the swearing-in Officer Dickerson. I wish her the very best, and I hope she stays safe and has a long career with the Laurel Police Department. On Friday, the Gold Star Wall came to the American Legion Post 60. So on Friday morning, the Mayor and I attended the, to honor the fallen ceremony at 10:00 AM that morning with a lot of dignitaries, and the wall was something to see, over 7,000 soldiers that were killed in four different wars are on that wall. And that's a little star with their name and the day they died and when they were killed with action. And I believe we had six or seven different Gold Star parents there, and they all spoke at the event, very moving. Saturday morning was the Jim McSiney March with the Laurel Library. It's a two-and-a-half-mile walk that Jim and a lot of the neighbors used to walk every day. And Jim McSiney was an absolutely super guy, and he gave Laurel its best. And then right after that, I went to another ceremony down at the Legion, which was at 1:00 PM with the Gold Star Mothers and Fathers down there, and it was another really, really moving ceremony. And that's about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Before I go to the Mayor, I attended, well, I stopped by the 7th McKinney March in Fun Day at the Laurel Historical Society this past Saturday. And also, I stopped at Laurel Police Awards. And I was actually happy to be there and hear the stories of what they were being awarded for, a lot of times you don't hear. So I encourage you to look on their page, on the Laurel Police Department's page, and just see what your officers are doing. They're not just patrolling, they're actually protecting us. And so kudos to them for that, and congratulations to all the people that got awards, all the officers. I want to say condolences to two friends of mine who came and supported Laurel when I was hosting events here, Paul James Cameron and Chelsea Jones. They passed away, Paul the September 16th, and Chelsea Jones just passed away this past Friday, two close friends of mine, and I want to wish their families my thoughts and prayers, and hope that their families are doing okay. That concludes my report. Mayor Mau?
Thank you, Mr. President. May I offer some condolences? First to Trey Calso, who was the Deputy Fire Chief of the Beltsville Volunteer Fire Department, and then he was also a former fire chief here at the City of Laurel. Trey passed away unexpectedly. Also to Dick Stivik, I just found out that Councilman DeWalt, I want to acknowledge and send condolences to the family and friends, as well as Fran Colson. Fran is the wife of Bob Colson, again, a member of the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department. Fran passed away last week, and I'll offer our condolences to them as well. Also to speedy recovery, to Josh, the husband of City Councilmember James Cole. So we wish them all our very best. I did have the opportunity to attend the kickoff of our 21st delegation team, and were able to talk to them about what's happening here in Laurel and some things that we'll be looking to them to, when we work in Annapolis with them. Had the opportunity as well to have our city hall in the park over at Centennial Park. I want to thank those residents that attended and also our staff. To Vic Whipple, who was outgoing president of the Prince George's County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association for the last two years, that was, convention was held at Beltsville, and I want to wish Vic the very best and thank her for her service. Officer Dickerson, as we heard, one of our new officers, and attended that swearing-in, and we wish her the very best and a long career. We did have a plaque presentation for the community rating system. That is dealing with the flood insurance, and we went from a rating of 10 down to seven with the things that we had to do here in the community. What that does is for anybody that lives in the flood area and they need flood insurance, that's going to save them some money when they go to get the flood insurance, because we were able to lower that score, and we hope to keep it lowered even more. The county executive did have a luncheon for all the mayors last week. Got to hear some things they were working on, and a lot of discussion between the mayors as well as the exec and her staff. Want to thank her for the invitation. As you heard, the Laurel Police Department did have their awards ceremony. We will hopefully put that out in a press release, letting people know what the award recipients, who they were and what they did. That information is crucial, I think, to let people know what goes on in our community and the things that our officers do while they're on duty and while they're off duty. And I think that's important to put that out there. As you heard, the Gold Star Tribute Wall was at the American Legion Post 60. I want to acknowledge, I want to thank the American Legion Post 60 for the work that they did to bring that here to Laurel to allow residents and to allow visitors to come and pay their respect and reflect on those that have been killed in the line of action. One of those, as you heard, it's over 7, that's actually over 7, it's at 7,200 names right now for the Gulf, Iraq, and Afghanistan wars, for those that were killed in action. And we appreciate being part of that, we were happy to participate. Police Department helped escort them in along with the county police, but it was a really nice sight. We did see one of our own, Teresa, who is the son of Lance Corporal Eugene Mills, who was killed in the line of action in 2012, so we remember him as well. The 7th Annual McSiney March, they got my check, I didn't march, and I didn't walk because I have a little injury, I need to stay off my feet, but it looked like they had a good turnout, looked like they had made some money for a worthwhile cause, especially, and remember Jim McSiney in particular. After that, I did attend the Patuxent Greens First Annual Community Day, I want to thank them for the invitation. And on the 24th as well, I did attend Pilate High School's Crab Feast, where I was able to present a proclamation to Virginia Scagorini. The Scagorini turned 100 years old, she was there eating her crabs, doing well, and the governor citation was presented as well from Delegate Lehman, and we did a proclamation, a small gift to her, Mrs. Scagorini. I do want to remind everyone in the audience and those watching, the State of Maryland Renters Tax Credit Application is due October 1st. If you need more information, if you go to the city's website, there's a press release that has that information in there as well. Couple of announcements, the city's, the city will be doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony on September 28th at the Discovery Park on Harrison Drive at 6 o'clock. That entire park has been redone, and we do a little ceremony kicking it off in the community. On October 5th, Walk Laurel Day will occur, that's from 12 to 1, we'll do that at Riverfront Park. The meeting for that, that day will be at the Laurel Municipal Pool. And then on October 6th, we're doing the first Laurel University Presentation for the community. That's the kickoff here, it'll be in the chambers. You do need to register for that, and that's at 6 o'clock. October 8th is the City of Laurel's First Annual, First Pride Day Celebration, 11:00 AM until 4:00. That'll be held at Granville Gootie Park. And then Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 10th, the city offices will be closed. Mr. President, I have some citations I need to go down front. We have several proclamations, Proclamation 2022-29, whereas October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanity Month by thousands of art and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for over 30 years. And whereas the City of Laurel recognizes that the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of all citizens, and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country, and whereas the City of Laurel encourages all residents to participate and invest in visual arts, performing arts, and educational arts. Now therefore, I create and promote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Laurel, and call upon all residents to celebrate, participate, and promote the arts and cultures in the city. Bill, you want to accept this? Bill is, Bill Bailey is our Director of Park and Recs and a staff, the Arts and Entertainment Command.
Thank you, Mayor. I know the Arts Council will be very happy to receive this, and it'll be my pleasure to present it to them. Thank you.
Next is Proclamation 2022-30, whereas in October of 1987, the first domestic violence awareness month was observed in the United States. Whereas domestic violence has no place in our society, and we have a moral obligation to help prevent it. A home should be a place of stability, comfort, and love, domestic violence shatters this important foundation. Whereas a crime of domestic violence and individuals' privacy, dignity, security, and humanity through the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, or physical and economic control are abuse. Whereas the effects of domestic violence on children is devastating and causes long-lasting problems due to emotional and or physical trauma. Whereas domestic violence awareness month calls attention to the importance of working together to ensure life free and free from harm for all residents in the City of Laurel. Whereas the purple ribbon has been recognized as October, excuse me, the purple ribbon for October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas to show the city's support, Laurel, City of Laurel's support for spreading the word regarding domestic violence awareness, purple lights will shine in the lobby of the Laurel Municipal Center each evening during the month of October. And now therefore, I create and promote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Chief, you want to accept this?
The ill effects of domestic violence within our community still occurs today, even though we've been combating it within law enforcement for many years. Laurel Police Department still pledges combat this to help the community, help the victims of domestic violence. I would just urge people, do not be afraid to contact us, don't be afraid to call us. We will come out gladly assist, help make people safe, or a lot safer than they are in this situation. So, thank you very much.
The next is Proclamation 2022-31, whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor all those who've lost their lives to breast cancer, and we recognize the courageous survivors who are still fighting it. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year, and tens and thousands will lose their lives in the battle of this disease. And whereas throughout those women and men who have breast cancer, women are at higher risk. I encourage all women to find out how they can find out, excuse me, all women to find out if they are at an increased risk and to learn more about recommended screenings by speaking to their healthcare providers. And whereas the City of Laurel stands in solidarity with breast cancer survivors and reaffirms our commitment to raising awareness in this disease and advancing research effort. And now therefore, I create and promote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Laurel and encourage all of our residents to join in activities that will increase awareness to prevent breast cancer. Ask Kim Rowell, our clerk, to accept.
Most people may know or not, my mother did have breast cancer, and breast cancer didn't kill her, but the treatment did. So, women and men out there diagnosed with cancer, please look into all of the options that are available to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Two more. Proclamation 2022-32, whereas Maryland Governor Larry Hogan is encouraging Marylanders of all ages to the streets, trails, and parks throughout the day on Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, and honor Walk Maryland Day to promote walking as a daily activity. And whereas walking as an activity provides many health benefits, including helping maintain a healthy weight, reduce risk of heart disease, stroke, type 2 diabetes, depression, and some cancers as well as improving your quality of, improving in your quality of life. And whereas Mayor and City Council of Laurel continue to encourage walk-through, the City of Laurel requiring walking paths in new developments and enhancing the existing walkways in the city. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Maryland are joining together to walk this day to promote this activity on a daily basis. And where, and now therefore, I create and promote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim October 5th, 2022, as Walk Laurel Day, and encourage all residents in the City of Laurel to walk that day. You can meet us, I said, at the swimming pool, we'll be doing that at Walk. And Bill, you want to come and get this? Bill Bailey, our Director of Park and Recs.
Again, thank you, Mayor, and we'll look forward to seeing everybody out there on October 6th. Bring the walking shoes, we'll go back. Thank you.
Proclamation 2022-33, whereas Community Media Day is an annual celebration of voices that brings awareness to the importance of free speech and accessible media for all individuals to have their voices heard. And whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy function of our community by connecting local government, community organizations, schools, and citizens. And whereas community media organizations provide a means for a diverse community to tell their stories, hear and hear each other's stories, and to create new stories together using social media and television programming. And whereas Laurel TV provides a diverse volume of programming on the public education and government access channels here in the City of Laurel. And whereas citizens benefit by using community media content to stay aware and to be involved in our community, now therefore, I create and promote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim October 20th as Community Media Day in the City of Laurel and hereby, and here I call upon citizens to vote, promote, and appreciate the importance of community media at Laurel TV and programming available on Comcast 996 and 71 and Verizon Channel 12. Ardeen Barnes, she's our Director of Communications. Can't take her own picture, so we got to.
More than anything, I just want to recognize the entire Department of Communications and many of the people who are back in the control room right now broadcasting this meeting live to our community. We have some fantastic people on staff, some young reporters who are just knocking it out of the park, winning awards already. Want to let you know that the City of Laurel did win a Telly Award for the PSA that we produced on the Take the Shot vaccine for the City of Laurel. We also won some awards for some other features that we've done in the community, and communications will be featured in the October issue of the Laurel Independent Newspaper. So if you're not getting that newspaper at your homes, make sure that when it arrives, you check it out and read the inserts for the City of Laurel section, it's called the Laurel Ledger. So make sure you read the City of Laurel section of the newspaper as well. So thank you to the Department of Communications, all the staff of Laurel TV, and to the Mayor and the City Council for your support of our efforts to keep the community residents and visitors informed. Thank you, Mayor Mau.
Last one is Proclamation 2022-34, whereas the City of Laurel is an active member of the Maryland Economic Development Association, MEDA, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to enhance the knowledge and skills of its members, encourages partnerships and networking with all people committed to bringing jobs and capital to Maryland to promote economic development as an investment in Maryland. Whereas the economic growth and sustainability of the State of Maryland, Maryland affects all regions and jurisdictions of Maryland, and the City of Laurel is an important component of the state's economic success. And whereas the City of Laurel promotes the economic well-being of the city by working to improve the city's business climate and professionalism of those who work in the field of economic development with an interest in the economic development of the City of Laurel. And whereas the Mayor and City Council of Laurel and Department of Economic Development reaffirm and dedicate, and dedicate, are dedicated to enhancing the city's economy by continuing to offer and promote economic development tools like the commercial corridor and the Main Street Development Programs in addition to the Affordable Housing Program. And whereas, and now therefore, I create and promote the Mayor of the City of Laurel to hereby proclaim October 24th through 28, 2022, as Economic Development Week in the City of Laurel, and urge all Laurel residents to join with us and recognize and reaffirm the importance of economic development. Robert Love, who's our Director, will accept.
As Mayor said, economic development is very important to the city, especially our local businesses are a part of the heartbeat of the city. With that, on Economic Development Week, we will be having our first in-person event in some time with local businesses, so stay tuned for that, and stay tuned for other events that week, which we'll be promoting on our various social media platforms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Mo. I want to move back, before I move on to the next agenda item, I want to move back to Councilman Mitchell. You have one more announcement from your report.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. I forgot to mention on the 1st of October, which is this Saturday, I'll be having people change, records should change too, record clearing, Know Your Rights Clinic. So it'll be the third clinic in which people are able to, for free, get their records expunged and then also know some of their, their legal rights. There will be voter registration, since we have an election coming up in November. Also, we will have someone there to help medical marijuana card patients signups. And with that being said, you know, please share the word that, you know, help get some, help get some freedom on paper for some individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Thank you for hosting another expungement clinic here in the City of Laurel. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, Mayor Appointments, Reappointments. Mayor Mo submitted the reappointment of former councilmember Fred Smalls to the Board of Appeals in a memorandum dated September 22nd, 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to a reappointment of former councilman Fred Smalls to the Board of Appeals.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item 6. This is the part where everyone gets to participate if you're here to speak. This, Madam Clerk, I have the list, so I see there's five people signed up to speak. As I call your name, please know you have three minutes and state your name and address for the record. And first I have Ellen. Oh, sorry. Let me open up the public hearing at 6:31 PM. And I will call Ellen to the, to microphone. Yes.
If you talk in the microphone, everyone else can hear you.
Press the button.
I'll help you out. I'll help you out.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Lyons. You said you need my complete address. I reside at 7901 Laurel Lake Court Apartment, the singing citizen building. Laurel Lake, Laurel, Laurel, Maryland. Okay. That's my address. Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Ellen Lyons again, as I stated. I am a resident of the city, I am a resident of the city of Laurel, Laurel Lake. Today I'm here because of what is happening in the City of Laurel. What is happening is absolutely scary to the resident. The reason I say it's scary because it's scary to me. My children even came to take me away from Laurel because of the rent's hype. I am trying to place me back home in North Carolina. I'm trying to hang on to Laurel because this is home for me. Rent is being hyped and it's not normal and it's quite scary. And I lost my church home. 944 Fourth Street. I don't have a church home, Remnant Baptist Church, because of the rent was stacked up a thousand dollars more, and we were not given adequate time to even seek into it or do anything about it. I have joined CASA because of the Housing Justice Coalition, because we need, we need to do and pass this bill now. And I'm asking council to go forward with this as quickly as possible. I need a church home and I need to stay in Laurel as a singing citizen. As a singing citizen, the way rent is, the way the landlord taking forth with the rent, they're making it impossible for the singing citizen, as well as the other citizen, to live in Laurel. I love Laurel. I don't want to go to North Carolina.
Thank you, Ellen. That was beautiful. Next I have Kia Jefferson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kia Jefferson, and I reside at Patuxent Place Apartments, 585 Main Street, Laurel, Maryland. I'm here today, like Ms. Ellen, to talk about, you know, the housing crisis. I have lived at Patuxent Place in the same apartment for 17 years. I know I don't look that old, but I have. And I have loved every single moment of it, except for the past year, we got a new landlord and everything went bad. Beginning of the year, new people, new ownership came, they didn't introduce themselves, they didn't tell us what, we're just getting emails about who to send our rent to. It was just chaotic. Then in the summertime, at nine o'clock at night, Kia got an email with a 23-day notice, my rent was going up $800 more a month, or $1,000 more in addition to what I was already paying to go month to month. Where was I going to go in 23 days to find a place, pack up? Getting emails, not normal business hours. It's just been a really, really hectic time. So CASA stepped in. I was glad to help and meet my neighbors and get signatures. And I'm, I'm one of the lucky ones. We came to an agreement, but that agreement is short-lived. It's only four years. So I'm here to really ask the council and the mayor to pass the Anti-Homeliness and Displacement Act that Councilmember, Councilmember Mitchell talked about last week. Saturday, I noticed a tent in my parking lot. I think somebody's living in there. Then I come out today, the tent's gone, but now there's a makeshift living room in my, in my parking lot. I mean, it's bad, y'all. It's bad. So we really need to do something, and we need to do something now. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Jefferson. Next on the list, we have Rose.
Good evening. My name is Rose M. Thompson. I live at 332 11th Street, Apartment 1. I have been living in this building since 1997. I started renting from the Martin property. Later, during the time Martin sold their property to C and G Property. But in December of 2021, the property was sold again to LLC 332. During this holiday time that was supposed to be preparing and being festive, I got a letter from them telling me I had 60 days to move, or my rent would go from $875 to $1,600. I am 65 years old, a State of Maryland employee, working for the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services. And I said, Lord, what, what am I going to do? In the midst of the letter, in tears, I also had a family member die from COVID in his twenties. I'm also Reverend Rose, okay? And I had another cousin who was in her 90s, Laura Dotson, who used to live down here on Maple Street, who died from heart disease. As I was preparing to bury my two relatives, eating that letter that was sent to me, I am still working every day. I take blood pressure medicine, and I'm asking God to not let me have no heart attack or stroke. Then CASA reached out to me, and we began to meet, and Councilman Mitchell, Mr. DeWalt came. And somehow, some way, we were able to stay for $1,000, and I believe the City of Laurel compensated us for a year. Here we are, approaching October. What's going to happen to us? Where do we go according to what we make? Everyone doesn't make six figures to go to live in a place that is fabulous, that you can afford back. Okay? I am comfortable where I am. And I'm asking the City of Council to help not only me, but all those residents that are working and trying to make Laurel their home better by being able to afford the place where they live. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rose. All right. We're moving on to Joam.
Good evening. My name is Joam Calderon. I have lived in 11th Street in Laurel for 25 years. When the new owner bought the property, I was paying $860 a month. The new owner said, 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 we have, we have 60 days or pay $600 per month. It over. When I got the letter, I felt sick, confused, scared. I thought that was an abuse. So I looked for a lawyer, and I looked for help. CASA helped us. I am here to ask to pass a law that only allows the owner to rise the rent 3% or 4%. That could respect our small income. We we don't have a high income. We are seniors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cowdorn. Next I have Ann. Is it Amy? Sorry. Anna? There we go. Anna. Please state your name and your address, please.
I'm going to speak Spanish. This is my community. My name is Anna Rodriguez. I'm living here in Laurel City. My address, 13149 Lajder Road, Apartment 3. I'm here to represent my community, the Latin community, the immigrant people who want to have money, how to pay their rent. Which they look at half, they have three jobs, two jobs, because they not, they not able to have the money to pay their rent. They leave their kids in home to go into work. People they not make, because they undocumented people. That's me. I'm here to ask everyone, y'all, help the community. We're here in Laurel, because this is our, this is our community. Laurel is one of the best communities I've ever been. I've been in United States for almost 30, well, 30 years, and this is my community. This is Latino community. This is Anna community. This me. I'm here for everyone, every single Latino community, to ask you guys, please see that how much, how many people suffer from rent increases. It is, it's, it's too much. That's me. I hope all of you have the consideration to looking for the poor-class community. See that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna. Do we have anyone else on the list? Is there anyone else that, all right. Anyone else signed up? Okay. Just going to go check. Well, thank you all for speaking. I can assure you, the city is working on it. We're looking at something comprehensive, not just about rent, but affordable housing period. It falls under one big umbrella. It's not falling on idle ears. We're, we're, something is being done and we're working on it. And as soon as something is out there, the public will, will, our communication department will put it out there on our work session agendas and our, as far as our agendas here in the council too. So just pay attention, keep coming to speak, and keep letting us know your concerns through email, either council member or myself or the mayor's office. But we are working on it. We are taking everything into consideration. All right? So I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:46 PM. Moving on to Agenda Item 7A, Consideration of the Bid Recommendation for Employee Benefit Insurance. This item was just discussed at the special work session before this meeting. I'll entertain a motion. She's going to speak? Okay. Well, before I entertain a motion, I'm going to have Ms. Klinger present it. Sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, President Smith, Mayor Mo, and City Council members. As discussed, the city offers health, dental, and vision coverage to employees and their dependents, as well as our retirees. The city utilized the NFP group to conduct the bidding process. And this bid was competitive after NFP countered their initial offer. However, Cigna offered a comparable plan at a renewal rate of 7% above our current rate, with a commitment to a 5% increase each year for the next two policy terms. Therefore, we believe that Cigna is the most advantageous choice for the city and its employees. The funding is available in the FY 2023 adopted general operating budget. I respectfully request approval of award to the recommended bid or Cigna for our health coverage from November 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2023. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council? Comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
And Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the bid recommendation for Cigna Health Insurance Coverage from November 2022 to November 2023.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item 8A, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1999, Text Amendment Number 262, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, to update the use tables in residential, commercial, industrial, and office zones, to update the schedule of parking requirements, and to update the definition therein. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Director Love, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, and City Council members. Before you, it's Text Amendment Number 262, Ordinance 1999, as required by the City of Laurel Code, providing legislation to amend the city's Unified Land Development Code. Text Amendment Application 262, Ordinance 1999, was filed on August 18th, 2022 by city staff to the mayor and city council of Laurel to amend the Laurel Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Land Development, and Subdivision Article zoning, Article 1, zoning amending, Chapter 20, Division 1, 5, 6, and 7, all which include the following sections that have been updated. Section 20-1.7, Section 20-6.13, Section 20-7.18, Section 20-8.13, Section 20-9.5, Section 20-16.5, and Section 20-17.2. The proposed ordinance was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning. The file contains a certified, certificate of publication verifying that this application and public hearing was advertised as required by law in the September 8th, September
Laurel Code, providing legislation to amend the city's Unified Land Development Code. Text Amendment Application 262, Ordinance 1999, was filed on August 18th, 2022 by city staff to the mayor and city council of Laurel to amend the Laurel Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20, Land Development, and Subdivision Article zoning, Article 1, zoning amending, Chapter 20, Division 1, 5, 6, and 7, all which include the following sections that have been updated. Section 20-1.7, Section 20-6.13, Section 20-7.18, Section 20-8.13, Section 20-9.5, Section 20-16.5, and Section 20-17.2. The proposed ordinance was sent to the Maryland Department of Planning. The file contains a certified certificate of publication verifying that this application and public hearing was advertised as required by law in the September 8th, September 15th, and September 22nd additions of the Prince George's Post. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the mayor and city council dated September 14th, 2022 reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on September 13th, 2022, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. The commission, on the motion by Mr. Wilson and seconded by Ms. Bonner, and carried on a roll call vote of all members present, voted to recommend approval of text amendment number 262, Ordinance 1999, as presented in the technical staff report, and proposed ordinance to the mayor and city council. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. President, there's nobody signed up to speak on this item.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:50 PM, and I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:50 PM. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1999, Text Amendment 262, An Ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, to amend a Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 20.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
I'm going to concur with council. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Love and his staff for the work they did. This hopefully is the last one that we'll have to do, and they updated almost everything, and I appreciate the work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 2000, An Ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Chapter 6 Elections, Article 2 Elections Officials, to increase the membership of the Board of the Election Supervisors to five members and providing an effective date. I read the title into the record for the second reading. Madam Clerk, do you have anything you want to add?
Mr. President, if I could just advise the mayor and council that the Board of Elections Supervisors met last week on September 20th and discussed this item again, and they are in full support of increasing the board to five members. Additionally, we are seeking interested people wanting to serve on the board and as election judges. There have been notices in the Laurel Independent, and people interested are asked to send a resume to the Board of Elections, and they could contact my office for additional information. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. President, there's nobody signed up to speak on this item.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:52 PM, and I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:52 PM. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Ordinance Number 2004 to make the election supervisors to five members.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, can I get a second?
A second, Mr. President.
Can I also make a comment, Mr. President?
Sure.
I'd like to make a comment. After the last election, because we went to, you could vote in person, you could mail your ballot in, you could do an absentee ballot, and we also had a mailbox out front where you can drop your ballots off. So I went in the next day, I believe we started, the election board was there well before nine o'clock. I got there around nine, maybe a little bit earlier, and I watched the whole procedure, which probably went to about 1:00, 1:30 in the afternoon. And it was amazing how much work they do to make sure that every single vote is counted. But I wanted to make sure that my constituents knew that no matter what way they vote in a city of Laurel, it's going to get counted. And I'm not even counting when Kim has to come in and coordinate everything that we do with the, with Prince George's County Election Board too, and she has to look through all those. And a lot of these votes are counted just by single-handedly going through them, and they have to tear the tops off, they have to, they had a machine to do that, and it was just, it was just amazing to me. But I felt 100%, I believe there was one, maybe two, votes that they couldn't count because they didn't do it right, far from being right. But they tried to get all the votes in there, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood it, and I saw that the work they did, and I would gladly increase that to five members because they were, it's, it's a lot of, lot of work. But I was very confident in the vote, voting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counselman DeWalt. Any more comments before we call the vote? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm standing.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
I'll concur. Let me also echo the work that the Board of Elections Supervisors do, and the work Ms. Rau does as the clerk to the Board of Elections Supervisor. I guess we should have done this sooner, Kim, so now she's retiring, so she's making good recommendations. I'll concur.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to our last agenda item, Agenda Item 8C, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 2001, An Ordinance to amend the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, and to provide an effective date. I read the title into the record for the second reading. Director Saylor, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, there's nothing additional for this ordinance.
All right. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. President, there's nobody signed up to speak on this agenda item.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:56 PM, and I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:56 PM. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2001, man, excuse me, An Ordinance to amend the General Operating Budget and Cap Improvement Program, Mayor and City Council, Laurel, Maryland, fiscal year of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo? I'll concur.
Well, there being no further business to come before the mayor and city council tonight, this meeting's adjourned.